It's officially seven o'clock. I'd like this call, the meeting to order and have an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Toole, signed by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Situate Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, December 16th, 2014. Our first agenda item happened to be walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a report from the town administrator. Tricia, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few items to review with the board this evening. The first of which was the deadline for all warrant articles, including those by petition, was at noon today, and we did receive two that were received in the town clerk's office by that deadline. I have provided copies with you briefly. One is for a zone change, for the change, the number of dwelling units in the overlay area for the planned development district, and the second is for a $2 million appropriation for forshore protection. These will be reviewed by the board and the advisory committee in the normal course of the budgetary cycle, and we have to also review whether or not they're permissible for town meeting to take up in terms of actual action. They'll go on the warrant by virtue of being a citizen article, but zoning articles require other statutory requirements, so we'll forward that to the planning board for its review and information as well. Along those same lines, Nancy and I have been working pretty much nonstop on the capital plan, and last week
Excuse me.
We met with every single department head individually to review their FY16 proposed goals and objectives, along with their budgetary requests. With the holiday, it's sort of a tight timeframe because the budget has to be given to the board and advisory committee on January 6th in accordance with our timetable. You might just have the departments you're meeting with that night budget, but the whole budget will be done. But as you know, it's about 600 pages, so we're working on compiling it. 600 for operating and about another four for the capital plan, but it's been great. This is Nancy's real full year that she's been able to work on it since she had just barely started when we were into it last year, and it's a breath of fresh air to have had her. So it's made it the first budget process in about four years for me where it hasn't been quite so nail-biting. So I just want to thank her publicly for that. You have a list of the items pending. I sent an email to the chair earlier this week asking to meet with him. Because you have so many things on your plate, some priority setting really needs to take place, just because you're into budget reviews and your agendas already have like 90 minutes taken up just with your budget reviews once you get into them. And so I hope to meet with John and have him set some relative priorities about other town-related business items that we can come back and share with the whole board. And as always, I'm available to talk with you individually if you have any questions about that or items that have a particular interest to you. We continue to be very busy with personnel vacancies and hiring personnel and sending out recruitment, and really going to try to address some of those challenges in the FY16 budget request. We have finalists for the Harbor Master position. There's an all-day assessment center on Friday for a deputy fire chief and fire captain. We need to hire permanent intermittents as a result of the promotions in the police department to lieutenant. We very much are in need of a sewer superintendent, so town engineer to replace Sean, who is promoted after Kevin was promoted, so a building clerk because Nicole's become a firefighter. I'd like to say that these are one-time situations, but as a natural course of a large organization, we have a lot of turnover, and it's becoming an issue in terms of our ability to management, manage it in the way that I think it needs to be done. Not in terms of just personnel vacancies, but just the whole spectrum of human resource management. It's 80% of our budget, and something I think you're going to see as a priority in the FY16 budget in a couple of weeks, in accordance with some of the recommendations in the Department of Revenue study. So the last thing I wanted to talk about, which relates to that as well, is we are having a real challenge in some of our DPW positions, particularly in the water and sewer operations when we get vacancies. That's because those positions require a number of licenses. The plant and the water distribution systems run under federal and state regulations, and a number of licenses are required. We've had tremendous difficulty filling those positions and having people with the proper licenses, or they get the license and go to the MWR or some, you know, much bigger organization. So in working with Mr. Cafferty, our DPW director, we're having a job fair, and that's going to be January 13th at the Situate Harbor Community Building from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it will be for sewer, water, public grounds, and highway positions, not necessarily vacant, although we do have a few vacant, but, you know, have folks who may be interested come and chat with our personnel, find out what the requirements are, or how we can train you if you're interested, or what resources available, and hopefully get a wider marketing out there to sort of bubble up these people. Because particularly in the sewer plant right now, we're struggling, and it's a matter of licensing more than anything. And that's all I had. Mr. Cafferty, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
No. If anybody has any interest, so feel free to come on down, and, you know, we'll gladly talk to them on any positions, or what type of requirements we're looking for when we hire people, and those same requirements could be used for other towns if they're interested in advertising, you know, pulling out to something somewhere else that they resonate with a lot.
Questions from the board? Oh. Maureen?
How are you advertising it, the public wex job fair?
We are going to do a bunch of things. I was going to talk to Ruth and have her get something in the Mariner, and we were going to put it on the website. We were also going to contact a couple of the Votek schools and areas and see what we could find out. One of the other guys actually had an idea of contacting any colleges that have environmental programs that might want to get involved in something like that. So it's active. I talked to Tricia about it probably about the past two weeks, and we're just working out all the bugs on how we're going to handle it, but anybody has any suggestions, more than welcome to handle.
Great.
Anyone else? Tricia?
No, that's all said.
That's it. That's a short report. All right.
I could go on and on if you want.
No, no.
I could discuss every one of these.
It's a big list.
Moving on to the next agenda item for 7:05, a review and update. DPW, Kevin Cafferty, on the water project update, snow removal priorities and policy, and emergency cleanup in Hummerock and other areas of town. Kevin, Sean, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So what's going on with Hadley? Because let me tell you, I hear a lot going on, or a lot of complaints, and I know I live in the area, but I've never complained because I go a different route, but
Thanks for going that other route, Sean.
I go that route, though.
What's the, what's the status, so we can tell people?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody. We've, we've done seven miles of water line replacement this year, this season, and I think it's gone pretty well. We have had some aggravations on Hadley Road. That work is complete now for the most part. They've got their pavement down. We're reviewing it. We might have them doing a little bit of work to the pavement to clean it up and get it all finished. It's not complete, isn't done, but complete as in all the water lines are in on Hadley Road. Everything's in, the hydrants are in, everything else, it's all connected. Everybody's connected up to the new line, and the old line's been deactivated.
Okay.
So what we will do is, we've, they've made the road in a safe, passable condition so we can get through the winter on it. In the spring, they will come back and they will grind out the trenches and repave those sections of the roadway, and make the road, hopefully, very close to what it was prior to the water jobs.
Well, two questions on that front. I know with Otis, Allen, and it's not Bay Ridge, it's the road I'm on, across from
Beale.
Beale. They not only just redid the trenches, they did the entire road. Why is it that they ended up getting the, and also Harbor Heights? Why did they end up getting the entire road done, and yet we're only going to do
Those roads were in very, in very bad shape in the first place, and we figured we wouldn't be able to salvage much of those roads. Hadley Road, that's something we'll review and we'll take a look at, and it might be something that we pave down in the future. If we pave it now, it's going to be getting ripped up with the proving grounds and all that projects that are going on there. So we can look at it. It could be something that has an overlay, but I think at this time to do a full pulverization wouldn't be, wouldn't necessarily work that well.
Well, let me be devil's advocate. I know that you're saying with maybe that section of Hadley with the potential growth and development around Toll Brothers and the proving grounds, but what about earlier on, you know, the beginning stages of Hadley Road down there, Jericho going up to Turner, or beyond that section towards Dad's Place?
It, it could be. I mean, we could potentially redo the roads. We're trying to balance what we spend on the water projects as opposed to repaving every street and redoing everything so that we have enough money to do all the water lines.
The only reason why I say that, Kevin, is because when you have the laterals that actually are connected to the main line
It's a bump.
They don't just stay on one side of the road. They go across, and they're creating, just even now going up Hadley, you know, you're going to, although they paved it over, you're hitting a bump, and then you hit a bump, and continue. It's almost like, and I'm only anticipating complaints in the future, because in time, I presume with salts and winter treatment for future, those roads, those, those patches are going to come up.
It could potentially.
It's going to turn into a nightmare.
Yep. And we'll look at it, and we'll look at it on how we, how we do the repairs. We could change it. We could do the trenches. If not, we can take that out from the contractor and maybe just put out separately and do a full repaving of the roadway.
The other thing I was going to ask, at least to consider, because it's, I've mentioned it before, certainly with some form of reservation or some kind of like area around the Lighthouse Point, because that's going to be repaved next year. But in addition to that, when I was going down Hadley, at least from Turner on, the sidewalk on the side is really in deplorable condition the way it was on Jericho. I mean, it has no, no curbing.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of like a Cape Cod berm. Hasn't really been dealt with, and frankly, it's a tripping hazard, not just in one location, but up and down. What would the cost be to kind of take a look at that as a, as a potential fix at the same time if the road gets redone? It's terrible to have the road redone and then have that sidewalk that's deplorable. I hate taking on more projects. It's more cost, but
No, it is.
It's one of the things where costs of redoing the road and at the same time dealing with sidewalks might be a prudent thing to do at the same time, the way we had done it on Allen Street.
And that's something we can price out and report back to the board what the cost to be for, for a new sidewalk. I'd love to see a new sidewalk going down Hadley. We do get a lot of complaints about it.
And you get a lot of foot traffic.
And there is a lot of foot traffic around there. What we're trying to do and be as prudent as we can on how we, how we spend the funds. We're trying to do as much water work as we can, and we don't want to spend that money on paving. We want to make sure we can replace all the cast iron lines. So we're, and the other thing is, we might get better value instead of having a pipe contractor paving the road, is coming back in and doing the paving through our
Chapter 90?
Chapter 90 bit, or something to that effect. So it's, we're looking at it two phases. Our, our main thing was to get the water line replaced, get everything patched up, and get out of there as soon as we could. We ran into some problems out there. We found a concrete slab that was kind of continuous through a lot of the area underneath the asphalt, which caused a lot of problems, and they also had a real lot of groundwater coming out from the proving grounds and the general area that was going into the roadway also.
Concrete slab, as in like they've had a road that was concrete originally, is that what you're
There was a concrete road underneath there, a few feet down below the existing
Is that near the proving grounds? Because it seems like there's some slabs around there that the
It's near the proving grounds, and it carried through, through those areas.
Probably because of the arminence and everything else.
So what happened is when they were ripping up the asphalt, instead of coming up with a trench, more of it was coming up, more of the roadway was coming up. Instead of saying in a neat trench, it was, it was pulling up more when they were breaking the concrete up.
True.
Because they might saw cut it, or what they do is they have a grinder and they grind it, and then they dig in that hole. But when you're pulling up the, breaking the concrete up, it's breaking, it's, it's pulling everything. It's heaving the whole, the whole road, per se, if that makes sense. So that was another problem that we ran into out there, that we, we didn't expect it to be as, as big as that extent.
Marty?
Yeah, just, as far as, back to Hadley for a second. So, I mean, it looks a lot better than a week ago, but, and you can drive down there, but it's still, if you, I don't know if you've been over there to take a look at it, but it
Every day.
It needs, it needs some, something, you know? It's still pretty difficult. I think, and the other thing is, the sidewalk there would be a lot easier than, than the, than the, the streets coming down into the harbor, I think. You don't have that curbing issue on a lot of it, unless you were going to go in and maybe do curbing.
I don't know. I just figured you might as well take a look at it. A lot of people use it.
No, ahead of time.
And I know
What's that?
You have a grass strip between the road.
Yeah, there's a grass strip between the two.
Right.
Not really.
Some of it, some of it, some of it. It's all different all the way up the road.
From Turner, from Turner down to Jericho, it's all, it's literally a berm that just, you know, cascades over onto
Sort of paved and
That's all. The way it was on Jericho. You go beyond that, I think there is some kind of like reservation area between the two. Sean?
I was just going to say, Kevin, this wasn't part of the original project to repave it from gutter to gutter on Hadley Road?
When I went out to bid, no. It was, it was built to do the, pave the trench, to repave the trench and grind the trench and go over that section.
Once or twice?
Twice.
So they'll come, but they come
So we'll come back in the spring. They will grind everything out and then pave over that and have it more like an existing roadway.
Right.
So what they've done now is just in temporary aspect.
I realize, right.
So they'll put a four-inch course down, grind two inches off, and then repave that section.
Can you split it out when you go out to bid and say what the cost would be to go for the whole entire road as opposed to just one?
We, no, because we could get in trouble, because then it'd be, it would almost be, you could do an ad alternate maybe, to that effect. You could say, do the grinding and overlay, or an ad alternate to pave the entire roadway.
I only say that because, excuse me, it was cold. If you do that, at least it gives you an option to say what the cost might be if you go vis-à-vis the contractor who has the equipment out there who's going to be repaving it, as opposed to trying to tack it on to chapter 90, maybe.
It's different equipment. You know, you'll have a Tilcon, or you'll have a T.L. Edwards to do the whole road, and CB or, you know, Resende's, one of those, they don't have the paving equipment. Then they're not set up for it. So, yeah. And then like to Kevin and Sean's point, what they're saying is if they go with the, with the, what is it? The bid that we, Plumb County bid, we're going to get a cheaper rate than probably if one of these Resende's companies does it right now.
So they hire a sub to do it.
So if they lay the layer just to patch, patch and do a nice patch over the, the excavating, excavation area, then ultimately you could go back and then put another layer over it, is that, or would they have to go grind the same area? No, all I'm saying is, if you end up going through chapter 90 and hire the Pilgrim or all these other bigger companies, are they going to go back and re-grind the area that was already put down to make it even?
They, they could, and if we're not happy with the job, or it's not working out by grinding the trench and overlaying the trench, it, it could be something that we no longer do that, and, and we go width to width on the whole roadway.
Then you have your moratorium. Now your moratorium kicks in.
Then your moratorium kicks in, and the other issue is too, is some of these streets that we're going to be doing, that we're putting water line in, have a potential to have updates with sewer when we do these new sewer districts. So our fear is that we're going to pave a water, pave a street for a water line, and two years later, three years later, we're going to get approval for the next sewer division, or we have to rip it up and upgrade for some of the sewer work. And I just say that, you know, we're trying to balance everything how we have it. Hadley Road isn't in that area, though, but I
I was going to say, no, Hadley isn't, but I'm saying I think it would be prudent, at least to try to keep that option open, because, for cost savings, number one, recognizing that, but also to see if there's a possibility to complete the road from corner to corner. Because you know what's going to happen. People are going to complain. The roads are going to become bumpy again.
Yep.
Then they're going to say, oh gee, you guys paved this road, and then you ground it, and we had to pay for that. Now you're wasting our taxpayer dollars. I mean, I could already hear the argument. I'm just saying, if you can at least anticipate it, that'd be helpful for us.
And, and we have that option now, because we don't have, we can tell the contractor, don't bother coming out and grinding the trench and repaving it. Your contract's done. We're taking that away from you. And then we could go out and grind the whole road. The problem is, we don't know what's going to happen with settlement over the course of the year.
Right.
Because of all that activity that went out there. There's a lot of groundwater out there. The material isn't the greatest shape. There's a lot of clay in it, so that heaves up and down. It may, there may be some issues out there, and we'll call the contractor to come back out and fix it when that occurs. The big issue, though, is if, if it isn't working out and we collectively decide we're going to go edge to edge of the roadway, we pull that money back from him. We don't let him, we pay him by the unit. We don't, we wouldn't do that work, and then we just do it under chapter 90.
And Kevin, I have no issues with that. So what do I tell somebody who says, well, why did you do it on Allen, Beale, Harbor Heights, and Otis? Because you did from, and
Because, because they were, I know, because they were too bad. In, in the road, there was going to be nothing left of the road. Those roads were a lot smaller, and we didn't think
That, I'm sorry, Kevin, they're less travel, because I think the same way. All right? If you did that to Hadley Road, in five years, you would not have as good of a road. Hadley Road's too ma, too major of a road to do that to. There's a lot less traffic on Beale and Allen and, and the, and the other one, I can't think of it. So you're not going to see that settling as much.
Right.
You have a lot less traffic on it, so.
Fair enough. I'm only throwing it out there because I'm sure that's the next thing people are going to complain about. Any other questions on the roads? So when do they get started, and when's the next bid?
Well, the complaint, the complaints were not that bad, believe it or not. I mean, we had a lot of activity going on. We did seven miles of pipe, and I, I can't thank the Selectmen, Town Administrator's Office, our office, the Water Department, enough for all the, everything that they handled. We had a water shutdown about once a day all summer, so that means we were taking out multiple people from water and doing tie-overs and everything else. Every day we had stuff down. So everybody did a fantastic job, and there, and there was minimal complaints. We understand the roads were horrible, but overall, I think it worked out pretty well.
And I think the residents are incredibly tolerant and
They were very tolerant.
I mean, really, kudos to all our residents who clearly want this to happen and understand the inconvenience.
And I don't even want to say this. You mightn't believe it. Some of the people on Hadley Road actually thought it was nice, it was best, because it slowed the cars down a lot, and there wasn't as much activity there, but
No, I, I agree with you. Slowed me down, slowed, you know, I think it's a fair thing.
No, we
I have no issues with the way it was done. I just
We were out there every day. Sean and I were out there at least, we traveled a couple times a day. We, we knew it was aggravating, and we appreciate everybody for how they handled that.
So the next bids for next year?
Next year, we have, we have engineering that's ongoing. We came back to the board, I believe, in October, and that was for the continuation of Countryway, Elm Street, Codworth, and up First Parish Road, all the way up to the tank across 3A to replace that line. That's undergoing, it's in engineering right now. It's still being designed. We have two contracts out. We're looking for an engineer to do a couple other projects. One is to do, I hate to say it, the next section of Hadley Road, to connect Hadley from where we left off to where the sewer project ended, and that will replace all the water line on Hadley Road, and then we'll be, we'll be done there for a while. We're also looking at the section of Glades Road from the end of Gannett to where we left off at Bailey's Causeway, and that'll replace that line. That line's in very rough shape. And we're also looking at the line on Summer Street, and that's a very bad line, and that's a source of brown water in the West End.
Sean?
Kevin, Glades Road, could we please do it before Memorial Day or after Labor Day? I mean, that's such a, you know, sorry. Summer Streets, they're a little bit different if that's the West End, you know, a little bit different, but please, if we could, you know, try if we can, the, the construction.
And if you end up going on Hadley, at least have some kind of, as you normally do, alternate routes, so at least people will know it during the summer. If it happens during the summer, they'll, they'll accept it. It's just I think the notice is the issue.
Yep.
Not that you didn't give notice. I'm just saying, the more prep they, we have as a town, people will begin to live by it and kind of adjust their schedules around it.
Mm-hmm. That's the second contract that we're going, and, and we will. We'll, you know, what we do is, all of these contracts, we learn a little more, and we, we get a little better on how we write our specifications. I know we have at least five or six pretty good changes that we're going to, that we ran into problems with this year that weren't our specifications, that we're going to update, that'll work out beneficial to the town. The other area we're going to do is in the area of Lawson Road and Branch Street, and this is going out now. We have the engineering contract out for that. We kind of held up on where we were going to do the other project. The, there were problems with the fire flow test for the library when they're redoing the library. We know we have a very old line there. We probably would have held off on that, but, you know, why library construction's going on, but there's problems with the fire flow test on, on what their fire alarm systems were. So we need to replace that line in order to accommodate that. So that's working out perfect, because we'll, we'll do that whole area at the same time and update those flows, so that's not a cost to the library.
Right.
And it won't be an interference. So that's the other area we'll do. It'll be Lawson, Curtis, Branch, Dream World, and Orchard, in that general area there. And we'll even try to do some of Captain Pierce and get that whole area built up. That's all 1901, 1910 water lines that we're going to get out of there. So that's it for the water lines, unless anybody has any
Great. Snow removal.
Snow removal.
Priorities and the policy. This is something that we put into place a number of years ago, like five or six, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Correct. Five years ago, we're not making any changes. DPW's first priority is going to be to ensure that police, fire, and medical and emergency equipment can move safely in town. Second priority is open up all the main and secondary streets for use by the public. Third priority is to open residential streets, and the fourth priority is to clear sidewalks and open up, get the areas opened up for the schools. And fifth priority is if there's any private ways that need to be opened up for emergency vehicles, we'll do that also, unless, unless there's imminent, an imminent issue. And that's pretty much it for the snow. I mean, there's other details about driveway and parking, but, but it hasn't changed in years.
So in essence, that all the streets are going to be plowed nonetheless, because in order to get the police and fire and ambulance to be, be able to gain access to the, to the areas. Primary roads are the first to get completely cleared.
Primary roads are the first. Yep.
And then secondary roads, which tend to be secondary, secondarily used, and then ultimately the third, which would be residential neighborhoods. They're not going to be cleared immediately. There will be a passageway. Roads, the plows go down to clear it for emergency access.
Correct.
And then ultimately, they'll come back towards the end, whether it's a day later to clean it all out and get it done. And then the fourth, which is a priority, clear the sidewalks for, sidewalks to the schools.
Yep.
So if schools are closed, they're not going to be clearing sidewalks until, generally until after everything's cleared off and the snowstorms are over.
Right, and even so, the sidewalks might become secondary, because the guys that are out in the plows, after they're done, they may go home and sleep for a while, and then go out in the sidewalk plow, depending, you know, depending on how that works, what's manned there.
And the other thing, you at least identify the policy. This, is this policy on our website, Kevin?
It is on the website.
Just make sure people understand that. Driveways, people can't just throw snow into the middle of the road. They're supposed to take care of that. The plows will probably plow if it turns out the snow's in the street. They're going to plow it back to get it out of the roads. You're not responsible for any damage to anything that's left on the public way. You leave a mailbox, you leave anything that may have get struck or injured, or not injured, but struck by like a mailbox, that's, that's your own fault if you leave it there. Then you have the sump pumps. Nobody's supposed to take a sump pump and pour it into the public way. And then you have on-street parking. You're not allowed on-street parking if it becomes a nuisance. The police will ticket it, and if need be, tow it, once they plow it out, I guess. And then you have, there is no private plowing, so don't expect any town or any employee of the town or contractor of the town to plow your, your driveway. There's hydrants. We ask people, if you have a hydrant nearby your house, please attempt to try to shovel it out. Obviously, the DPW Fire Department, I'm not sure, Kevin, who goes around at some point
It's usually a combination.
Of both. But if you have one, be a good Samaritan, clear it out in the event that there's an emergency. Catch basins, try to clear those out. I think that's what the question is, you know? It's hard to identify where they are. Ultimately, it's a lower priority.
We actually have an arrow in the roadway that points towards them so that we can identify them if we're trying to track them down the street.
Pretty much sums the fire, or the, I'm sorry, the snow removal policy.
I just got one quick thing.
Go ahead.
Just, and as far as the fire hydrants go, there's one in my neighborhood, and I, during a couple of storms, I've cleared it out a couple of times, and then this, and the people that are plowing for the town blow it back into the, so if they could be aware not to, you know, it's, it's difficult enough to, to keep it clean, you know? So, I know who it is, but we could just get the word around.
Probably want your house burnt down. Ann, what can I do for you?
In North Situate, the sidewalk that runs from basically the Feathered Nest to the corner, Countryway to Gannett Road, has historically not been plowed, and snow has been left piled up at the intersection of Countryway and Gannett Road, to the point that you need to walk into the street and either to get to the intersection, and then the intersection itself, there's a cut through in the island that is never plowed.
It's handy.
So it's truly, truly a safety issue in North Situate, where the snow is all piled up on the public sidewalks. And I really wish that that could be addressed.
Kevin?
If Ann would like, and she has some concerns with that, I'll gladly bring Mike Breen and myself. We can get out and meet with her and meet with any of the business owners, and we can talk about it and see what we can do to alleviate it.
Good. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, audience? All right. Kevin, moving on to the next item, which happens to be the emergency cleanup of Hummerock and other areas in town. I guess I guess this is anticipating some kind of, like, major storm that we generally have, or two, or three.
It is, and we're gonna briefly touch on Humrock, down in the north side of Central. I had Phil Mara out there the other day. We've actually done five or six cleanups already this year. Basically, our, our main mission, it's, it's a very tough and hot area to deal with. We are, we have hired a contractor, an engineering firm, to file with the Conservation Commission on how we handle the cleaning up, where we have residential houses on one side, we have a swamp, not a swamp, I guess you could call it a swamp, wetlands area on the other side.
Is that the South Riverside?
Yes. And you cannot put anything in that area, you cannot haul any of the material out. All the beach is private property, except for one lot there, and we wind up stacking the material on the side of the roadway.
So, is this a combination of cobble and sand, beach sand that we're running into for material?
Exactly.
All right. So, you can't put it in the beach, you can't put it into the swamp area?
Correct.
You can't, you can't truck it out?
We can't truck it out either, because it's a...
So, what do they expect you to do with it?
Pile it?
That's it?
It's, 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 we stack it on the side of the road. Right now, the way the road is, the road width is about 20 feet down in that area, the right away of the road is 50 feet. So, we're stacking it in the area, kind of between the houses and the roadway, right now. It's not the most ideal situation, and we're doing the best we can clean it up. In the past couple of years, what's happened is the residents have paid private contractors to take that material and put it back in front of their house and build a berm, because there is no seawall there. So, they build a berm up to protect their houses, so they don't get damaged.
So, they're allowed to do that, then?
They are allowed to do that. Conservation will issue them a minor permit. And that material's actually valuable, that, that roundstone. We were paying $25 a ton for it over at Masquashke. If, if we were a haul-out situation, we could haul it to Masquashke and put it right in that general area and build the berm up. But I believe they want to keep it on that beach to help maintain that beach and help, help the area in general.
All right.
So, it protects it for storms.
In addition?
The one big thing with DPW is we'll clear the roads, we'll open the roads up, but we're, we're not gonna be, you know, shoveling everything back into, into private property, or beaches, or anything to that effect. We'll stock it up where we can. If, if we had an area in Humrock where we could stack it up, we, we would, we'd do that. We own one lot down at the very north end section, and you'll see that'll be all mounded with material. We'll stack up everything we can. In the other major areas that get affected, Oceanside Drive, we have those two lots, those two open areas over in the area about between 110 and 58, Oceanside Drive, that we fill up and stockpile a lot of, of the debris there, because we have that lay-down area.
What about roadway breaches? I see you have, this is an action plan for May of this year, right? Emergency plan for Humrock Road repair?
It's the Humrock breach.
Oh, we have, we have an emergency plan. I drew up about two years ago, of all Humrock in case there is a breach. And it just goes down the different options that we have and how we should handle it. And it goes as far as how to fix the breach, to the effect as if we need to get an emergency bridge out there, contact names, who to get the emergency bridge out. We've looked at, like, maybe bridges, which is a typical bridge that's been used since, like, World War II, when they were crossing a river, they drop it down, push it across. There's a place in, out by Worcester that has those in stock, and they're readily available. You could call them up. There's a 24-hour emergency hotline, and mobilize them to start bringing a bridge out and get it set up. So, it has all that contact information with our emergency procedure, just who to contact, contact the utility companies, the water, gas, everything else. But the idea is, how can we get in there as quickly as we can, so we can open it up, get everybody out of the area, and provide emergency services if need be.
So, in other words, we're not anticipating that, but in the event that there was a situation like that, we're prepared to deal with it.
We have a plan, and, you know, we, we're at least set for it, hopefully. You know, you're never set for it, but we at least have an action plan of what to follow.
Questions from the board?
Just a comment.
Sean?
I think Mass Highway has, I know they have a lot of bridge material up in Cohasset, but I don't know if it's what you described. It's all galvanized, you know, bridge material. So, just...
I, I know you can call these guys up, just from what I've done, I've used them in the past. We can look into what Mass Highway has. I, I didn't know if that was...
I don't know if it's what you just described, but it's a lot of, it's bridge material.
Usually, the good thing about calling these guys, they rent them, that's their business, so when you get out there, they have all the knots, the bolts, and everything, and they build it for you, and you push it right into place.
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to Mass Highway saying, do you have the bridge deck, or do you, you know?
All right. Hopefully, we don't even have to...
No, I don't, we don't, but we can look into that in Coha, where is it in Cohasset, Sean?
Uh, the top of the hill, Mass Highway's pit, right?
By the transfer, by there?
The old landfill, up to the top of the hill.
We can take a look up there and see what they have. Talk to them.
What?
Two things. Kevin, thank you for that tour, because it was quite eye-opening. And it is a big challenge for you, I know. The bridge that you and Sean are referring to, do we have a cost on that? Do we lease it? Do we buy it? Is it...
Um, we would, we would...
Should we have to go that way?
We would rent it.
Rent it?
We would rent it at that point.
Okay.
And I think it'd be the market price, whatever that would be at that time.
So, one of the things we've talked about is, if we actually had a breach, MEMA and FEMA would be, MEMA would be here, and the Corps would be here right away, because we'd be dealing with evacuations and stuff like that. But then, after that happens, how do we deal with the reality of the, the wide gap? So...
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So, we've looked at three different, we've looked at three different options. Can we use, can we use fabric sand and just fill the road back in, or is it just gonna wash right out? We've looked at one of the options, you might have to drive steel sheets across there, and then backfill it and rebuild the utilities that are in there. But that all takes time to get a crane, to get the sheets, to get all that equipment. In the meantime, what do you do to get people over there? So, this would be a quick fix to get something over there while you do the repairs.
Okay. And then, just to clarify...
And it might take 24 hours. It's not gonna be...
Oh, no, understood.
...dial a bridge, and it'll be here in two hours.
Oh, yeah, no, no, understood. Just curious.
That erector site out there, guys, sorry.
I got a socket set, let me go home and get it, I'll be back.
It's tough. With the current conditions, could you just clarify what you said earlier about the, the residents are able to remove that rock and put it back on the beach, but we are not? Was that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Correct. Well, it, it's private property, technically, on the beach, so we're not just gonna go marching on the beach with equipment and, and stockpiling material there. We could talk to residents at some point and look for easements, but I'm, I'm sure, you know, nobody's approached us and said, you know, we want to give you an easement, because we'd probably do just like we do with the seawalls. You'd give us a construction easement and access easement and a public right-of-use easement, if they wanted to do that. I'm sure we'd talk about it, we'd talk about it with the board, if that's what they want to do.
Okay. I just want everyone to be clear why we're not able to put it back.
Right. And every time, Humrock is unique in so many ways. It's a barrier island, so every time heavy equipment goes on a barrier beach, that's a problem. And, you know, we've had the state geologist down here walking with us to see what we can do. And their position is that the ocean's gonna go where the ocean wants to go, and that material's continually gonna come over every time there's a storm. Our obligation is to make sure if there's an emergency, an ambulance can get there. And, and then, in addition to what Kevin just said, that, you know, for years and years, the town was going on to private property, restoring people's backyards. And as much as it's hard to have people hear that because they were accustomed to that service, that's not the town's responsibility or job, especially during an emergency or after cleanup. It's to clear the road, make sure we can save their lives. And, and it's a change from decades, so we certainly understand people are frustrated, but I think this is the fourth year where, you know, we, we don't do it. And we're working very closely with Conservation on individual orders of conditions for that entire public way, so we can deal with it after we clear it, because we understand that's a huge frustration for people. And then, when it rains or snows again, that creates little rivlets and problems for the homeowners if the stuff hasn't been cleaned up. And we're so limited in what we can do, because it's so protected, because the salt marshes on the side, that we're trying to develop, you know, we're trying to segment the whole island to make sure we can work in cooperation with Conservation. But it's very difficult. And the one thing you didn't mention, Kevin, is we're looking at trying to build up Central Ave by several inches, to see if that mitigates the washover. Yeah.
We received FEMA money to repave that part of Central Ave.
Right.
So, what we're looking for is, May or June, we hopefully are out there, we're grinding the road. Usually, when you grind the road, you remove some of the materials, so you keep it at the same elevation. We were planning on grinding it, and then just regrading that, and then paving over it. So, in essence, it would, it would bring up the road a little bit, and it would, it would help. It's not gonna solve all the problems, but it might help a little. And you're talking probably four to six inches max of what you're raising it by.
Okay.
And we may have, we have a couple instances that we run into out there, is, you get to a point where the overwash has come across, it's built up on the residential side, but it's also filled the, it's filled the marsh up with cobble, and the cobble might go out 50 or 100 feet. And you have a low section of the roadway there, and that retains water, and that ices up, and that causes a problem. So, what we typically have to do is, at that point, go out and trench out into the marsh, and bring it back, so you have a trench that can alleviate the water, because all the water from the road just naturally goes there. And that's always a hard topic to go over with Conservation, and that's one of the things we're working with an engineering firm now, to get a new order of conditions, so it's, it's very crystal clear on what we can and what we can't do out there, when we go out to make those responses.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I know it's not easy.
Kevin, Sean, that's very helpful, at least for, for the public to understand. Again, make sure, if you can, that this is on the website, if it's not already, just so people...
I think both plans, both are on the website. And we've had people call up and ask for it, and we've sent them over the plan.
I know we spent a lot of time on it, but I think it was valuable, so that people can understand it for watching TV, if it gets in the press. And, anyway, I appreciate it, gentlemen, very much.
And we have a plan of some of the work that we're looking to do next year, where we're gonna be replacing. Blue is what we did this year, all these blue areas here. The red is gonna be one project, the orange will be another project, and the green will be another project. The third project for the three projects. So, we're, we did seven miles this year, next year we're going for eight, in that general area, so we're being aggressive on it. We want to get as much done as we can. We hope the brown water calls are already going down, we'll see this spring. And it is what it is.
That would be good, Kevin, on the website, if you get a chance to.
I was wondering.
Yeah, it'd be great to have them.
We can do that. We're, we're gonna be tweaking it as we go. I don't want to say we're definitely doing this street, because we'll be working with the engineer and the water department, because we don't want to shut the whole town off and have a disaster at one time, so we might move a couple of the streets around for traffic considerations.
Just tell them it's anticipated, these are the areas potentially.
Yep. Yep. So, we could probably get that up, without a problem.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Very happy holidays to you.
Thanks.
Happy holidays.
Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is a discussion vote with the Planning Board. Hearing on adoption of Chapter 40R, Laura Harbott, our town planners here, with the esteemed member, Mr. Bill Limbacher of the Planning Board, Chris McConaughey from the EDC. Gentlemen, lady, come on up. Thank you.
Laura, how are you?
Hi. Was this in the packet? Um, I think it was. Okay. I didn't mean to distract everybody from, you know, what everyone here has to say by handing this out. This is part of Matt Smith, the Economic Development Planner from the MAPC's report, and...
Hate to tell you this, you're gonna have to speak up, because I barely hear you.
Okay.
I've got this cold, and it's been affecting my ears, so my apology.
No, I tend to speak softly, so, thank you. What I just handed out is a presentation by Matt Smith, the Economic Development Planner from MAPC. I, I don't mean to, you know, sidetrack everyone on, you know, into, to looking at that, but it's, it's a good piece of background on the zoning that he recommended the town adopt, called 40R. I wanted to start by letting Chris McConaughey say a couple of things about it, and Bill Limbacher also, from the Planning Board, and then I can fill in a few of the details.
Yeah, so, thank you. So, this 40R is kind of associated with smart, what they call smart growth overlay districts, or the establishment of those. And as part of the MAPC work done on behalf of the Economic Development Commission, one of the recommendations to explore was the creation of 40R zones in Situate. And we have taken that and begun exploration specifically in the Green Bush area, where we currently have a village overlay district that's been established. And we feel that there are a couple of really significant advantages to potentially replacing the current village overlay district with a, a 40R overlay instead. Basically, the two differences are, the state has created 40R as an incentive for communities like Situate who have transportation hubs, like we do in Green Bush and in North Situate, to establish development zones around those hubs, basically taking further advantage of, you know, the presence of the transportation system which goes through Situate. And as part of that incentive are some revenue opportunities for the town. And knowing how important revenue is for Situate now more than ever, that's one of the most compelling things for us in the Economic Development Commission, is, is the opportunity to maybe create some revenue. This is revenue that comes in the form of payments from, from the state on an ongoing basis for creating a, a 40R district. And then, if any development were to actually happen in, in that district, the state actually pays on a, on a per-unit basis to the town on an ongoing basis. In other words, as far as I understand it, there isn't an endpoint, it's not a, you know, for two years, or five years, or 10 years, it's on an ongoing basis. So, what we wanted to do today is, is just kind of talk about that, and also fill you in a little bit on some of the steps that we've taken so far, and some of the steps that we would like to take moving forward. I mentioned the incentives that exist from the state for creating a 40R zone, or replacing our existing zoning with a 40R zone. The other, the other difference is, it allows us, as part of the zoning to, and this is Bill, where you need to help me a little bit, is it allows us to create, not zoning by special permit, but zoning by...
By right.
By right. So, in other words, what it allows us to do as a town is to basically establish the kind of design criteria that we want for that, for that zoning area, which I think has two benefits for, it has an important benefit for us, it has two benefits for developers. I think the benefit for us is, it allows us to really establish criteria, and we can make those criteria as comprehensive as we want, or not comprehensive, but it allows us to kind of lay out design guidelines that would be followed. And I think that's important, because we talk a lot in the Economic Development Commission about, you know, we want, you know, want to talk about economic development, but we don't ever want to compromise kind of the character of the town. And being able to develop while still maintaining the character of the community is important, both to us, as well as to a lot of the, a lot of the people that we've spoken to. So, that's an important benefit for the town. I think for developers, the two benefits are, it sets up the by right, rather than by special permit, and I think that's gonna potentially make the development process a lot easier, and a lot more straightforward, and potentially, a lot faster for developers. And I think, you know, one of the things that we've heard is, in general, you know, that Situate has, has sometimes been a difficult place for developers to, to work. And so, I think this, this benefit goes a long way towards, you know, kind of demonstrating maybe a new attitude in the town towards development, and then, in, in making development something that we can all, you know, work together towards. So, that's, that's really brief, and we can go into that in more detail, or take that offline. What we've done so far is, so, Matt Smith from the MAPC is, is the one who's kind of presented this to us. We have, you know, some very rough numbers that, in terms of, you know, potential revenue for the town, that, you know, is, really hinges on how much development would actually occur in, say, Green Bush, for example. But, you know, I mean, we're talking potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, in, in, I'm gonna call it free money from the state, right, as part of an incentive to establish the zoning overlay. What we've done also is meet with the Department of Housing and Community Development. We hosted them a couple of weeks ago here in Situate, three representatives from that group. And they are the, they are the group that would, that would review and approve a, a proposal from Situate. And so, we gave them a tour of the Green Bush area to show them, you know, kind of where the opportunities are, what the, where the current overlay district exists. Got a lot of valuable feedback from them as far as, you know, what we can do, and the things that they look for. They seem to be very, I will say, very positive about the potential for Situate, and very willing to help us in the permitting process and proposal development process. So, that happened recently, and I think one of the things that we wanted to talk about here tonight is, as a next step, then getting your permission to have the Planning Board host an open forum for the town, to kind of publ- host an open forum for the town, to kind of publicly, kind of present this opportunity and give us all an opportunity to both educate the town as well as get feedback from the town.
Bill, go ahead.
That's right. I think you hit on, I think, the key points. One is, is that essentially it's the same, virtually the same density and same everything else that exists in our overlay district now. The difference is, heads up, is it's not a special permit, so it's less owners, and the expectation for developers is known. It really boils down to what the design criteria is. If you follow it, it was through the design criteria, it would be the overlay. Have a chance to...
People at home can hear you, sorry. It's just, just let's everybody understand what's going on, Bill.
And you go back, so it gives the developers a sense of expectation of what they can anticipate rather than going through a special permit, which you know can hinge on some very major or minor points depending. So it's literally the same as it is now, is our overlay district, it's by right instead of special permit. Density is virtually the same. It's got the revenue component. It's basically, you, once you create the zone, you get paid for potential, and then as you implement that, you get paid on a per-unit basis. So the money comes through, the money is unrestricted in terms of how it comes to the town, and it's about as guaranteed revenue flow as secure from state as you're going to get. So that's where we are, so that really is the comparison between what we've got today and what we've got tomorrow, or what we would have with a 40R.
One other thing that I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
One other thing that I wanted to touch on is, there's another piece to it, which is a companion law called CHAP 4S. And what that does, again, it's from the state, and it would reimburse school districts for any gap between the property tax payments that are generated as part of that 40R development, and then the costs for schools and, you know, average, for student costs for any students living within that zone. So, you know, one of the things is, you know, you build a development, you generate a certain amount of property taxes, you know, but, you know, if it's filled with kids, it could have some implications on our school costs. And so what this 40S companion law does is serve as a gap payment. And it would be, and it would be something that would be, I think, evaluated every year to look at that gap, and whenever that gap exists, or whatever that gap would be, would be offset by the state. And so that's separate from the incentive payment that will be coming from the new district. Moore, did you have a question?
Sure.
Go right ahead. I got a few.
I know you do, I know you do. Well, I saw this presentation twice. Once went through with the EDC committee a couple of weeks ago, and then also sat through Matt Smith's presentation last week at the Planning Board. It has a lot of, in my opinion, a lot of positive impact on our town, not only the incentives, which are very large, just to adopt this, just so the public knows, anywhere from, you know, for 100 units is $350,000. And on top of that, I want to make sure we understand this right, any additional residential unit is $3,000 on top of that zoning incentive, correct, that we would be paid? Is that correct, Stephen?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. So I want to make sure I understood that. So really great potential for us to bring in revenue. And also, there's an affordable housing component to this as well, which 20% of the units would need to be affordable, which really promotes the opportunity for young couples and teachers and firemen to live in a district where they can walk and really take advantage of mixed use. So I think it's a great opportunity, and I definitely support having a public hearing on it.
I think we should have a public hearing. I think it's an interesting concept. The reason why I went through this, and I actually didn't, I wish I had the benefit of having this handout before our meeting, because I only had the memo from Laura, because it raised a few questions, some of which are slightly answered. But the one question I had was, right now, it's 15% in the village overlay district, right? 15% of those units are required to be affordable. And the restriction is it's three and a half stories or 40 feet, as opposed to a 40R, which would be 45 feet potentially.
Potentially.
And right now, and I guess I'm not sure because I haven't done the calculation, but if I had an acre in the Green Bush area, what's the density on that?
It's 16 to 20 units for 40,000 square feet, so probably 16, 17.
But this, you could go up to 25 units per density.
Probably, yeah.
And that might be more consistent with the acreage coverage, I think, in Harbor, maybe even less, but I forgot what Harbor has.
There are a couple developments in the Harbor that are much denser, but they have very small units.
So the first question I'd have to DHCD or the presentation is, what makes them think by increasing the required number of units to be affordable from 15 that we presently have up to 20, okay, which means it's going to be less of a profit margin for them, is it going to draw more people to come down here? I think, Bill, you hit on the point, the fact that it's a matter of right as opposed to a special permit might facilitate it. So that might be a benefit for them to want to do it. We've already had this in place since 2005 or '06, and with the exception of the apartment complex that's going down on Ford's Place there on Country Way, there rarely hasn't been a lot of building down in Green Bush. So that was the one first thing I'm saying. The second thing I had was the design requirements, because one of the biggest problems I've seen when I was on the zoning board is that people would come in through the special permit process and say, "You're not to legislate design. So I'm going to come in, I'm going to maximize every square inch, and I'm going to fill out that box. So I'm going to build it up as ugly as I want, but I'm going to get it." Now, if you have a matter of right, and you come in there as a matter of right and say, "I'm going to fill the box up, 45 feet density it all up, and put in cheap-looking stuff", as opposed to having requirements for some kind of aesthetics, for the concept of what you want with Green Bush for business development, that's one of the things that I think needs to be raised at the hearing that you're having. I think personally, that's a huge issue, because everybody complained about Front Street.
That's spot on, and that's one of the things that we've talked about. It's really the design criteria that's going to basically set the initial premise, and that's going to be followed all the way through. So if you want sidewalks in front and parking in the back, and you want to have it with clapboards or shingles, or whatever criteria you have, you need to get that through up front. That way, they're all consistent.
They'll know it. You got it, going into it.
Yeah, so it really takes out that wiggle room, that kind of, you know...
But I'm only saying that because I know from being on the boards, it's very difficult because you get people who are new to it, who join it, who haven't been in the history, to know how far they can push back to say to these people, "If we're going to give you a matter of right to build something, this is what you're going to do." And a lot of them will say, "Well, fine, tough it. You know what? We're not going to do it, and we're going to threaten ourselves." That's a really critical component of this whole 40R, in my estimation. The second, the third thing that I noticed was, I noticed the map, we hadn't gotten to, but I think it's in either this one or the next one, that you're saying the map is going to be for the basic village overlay district in Green Bush, which I have no issues with because a lot of that, what used to be under the, you know, it's kind of all, Tony, thank you. Tony unfortunately had a family commitment, and he's here. We appreciate you, Tony. Lost my train of thought. Oh, the overlay is that a lot of the stuff in Green Bush is relatively new. I mean, it's kind of industrial, it's kind of like modern 50s and 70s kind of building and structure. Some of this, though, deals with Country Way, which frankly have that village look. If you're an owner of village on Country Way, and you're going to maximize it, then you're going to lose those nice buildings potentially, you know, including yours. But, I mean, you got Frank Snow's building, you've got Kevin Norton's, which is the beautiful fire station they redid, you know, some of these nice buildings that frankly, I know, like with the antique that's on Country Way, Ford's Place, you know, they're going to redo the whole thing and move it. I think that's something that you've got to be mindful of. If you want to keep that village feel, but allow the density behind it, I'm all for it. It's just, I'd hate to see them maximize it to the front, and then you have this, half the side of the road looks nice, the other half looks like a wall of China, which a lot of people are complaining about on Front Street, to be cognizant of. There's got to be some kind of, through the design criteria, of step backs, and/or if there's some older buildings, some preservation to some degree to incorporate in their plan. You mentioned the 40S. The question I had with the 40S, which I don't have answers, and I don't expect you guys do either, but does that include apartments? Because if somebody comes in and says, "I'm going to build apartments," and then they have somebody who's in the school district, I know it's with property taxes, how does that get equated? Because, I mean, it would be a quick end round to be able to say, "Well, I have apartments," even though we have people who definitely do need the homes, and they have somebody in the school district, to say, "How does that get taxed for the benefit of 40S so that we do get the difference in the gap?" As opposed to, I assume the property owners shouldn't, I'm not saying they do, I presume they must have figured that out, but to me, that's a critical component for it, because if we're going to get that revenue, you know, we don't want slum landlords who are going to say, "Well, great, now you're not going to pay to our school systems," because we're taking it on for the purpose of trying to help our school systems, encouraging people to live with their kids. But if they get an end round, that's something I think would be unfair. And the other thing I had was, I know, and I'm going to look at it, I know Plymouth, when I was down there, was doing some of the 40R in some of their downtown areas, which was kind of interesting, their designs. I haven't seen Kingsdon, Langfield, Dartmouth, or Norwood, but I think it's important that we take a look at those. How those towns, especially something that's comparable to our town, how they've incorporated in. Plymouth is difficult because it's a much larger, it's like 60,000, 70,000, and they have much more of that kind of industrial with some of the buildings that they have. What towns that are comparable to us, and what have they done, what have they built through it? I think it's a great idea, I really do, because I think we're dealing with affordable component. And, you know, I think it's a great thing for the town. I just, I'm always leery about the aesthetics, because you talk about the charm of the town, the last thing you want is to lose it. And then you can say, "Well, we want to encourage this because we want growth and development." But if you put something in, and I know from my experience, people are willing to maximize every square inch they can, and they'll sacrifice the aesthetics. And that's what's going to hurt those areas if they are aesthetically unpleasing, because they become a blight, and then they turn into like an ugly area. Not subjective, I get it, but, you know, everybody has their own view of what Situate, how quaint it is in different areas, but you've got to maintain that through the design requirements.
One thing I wanted to add, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Chris.
I just want to add one other thing, because we've been talking about Green Bush, and that is, that's the area that we are focusing on right now, but I also want to make sure, it's kind of on the radar screen, that, you know, North Situate represents an opportunity to create a 40R district as well.
It doesn't.
If we deal with the...
It's infrastructure.
Now, the other thing that I did learn is that, I believe we can create a 40R district without the infrastructure, just obviously can't be built without it. I met with, Anne Burbine and I met with a number of the business owners in North Situate a couple of weeks ago. And obviously, as you probably know already, sewer continues to be an important issue for them, but, you know, the 40R opportunity is something that's... I get the, quite a clear sense that if the infrastructure issues were resolved, you know, there are development opportunities there. There are a lot of owners who would like to do something with that area, and I know you know that, you know, those infrastructure issues continue to be an important limiting factor, and they will be for ever creating 40R district up there. But if we can resolve that, that represents another opportunity to create that district, and again, potentially generate some incremental revenue through those stated incentives.
The other thing I was going to say, I noticed, and I think it says, "They have to have retail on the first floor." Is that fair to say or no? I forgot, I thought I saw something briefly.
I think that's probably, if it's a mixed-use 40R, then they probably do, but it doesn't, there are options besides the mixed-use or completely residential.
It comes down to the point, the mixed-use would require to have retail. The other thing about 40R that's unique is the fact that you could, when you look at the overlay, the overlay map, you can pick any parcel, you can unique a parcel, or two parcels.
So then again, don't...
I said, when you look at the map, and it shows an area that we're looking at, I think is worth considering, it does not have to be, it's not an all or anything, it could be one property or two properties within that. So that the concept of spot zoning that you think of it really doesn't block.
Because I will say, I've seen the map that's proposed, I'm like, the area on the other side, including the MBTA parking lot, you know, to me, would be ideal.
Right.
You know, right up Old Driftway, right?
Right.
Old Driftway is the ideal location, because...
And it's something that, you know, time is not on our side.
There's very much there, spare space.
You know, the parking lot's going to be developed, and we'd like to get this in place and be able to take advantage of that, because that's low-hanging fruit for now.
John.
Sure.
All right. We formed this overlay district, okay? Nothing's been done. And now we're adopting a 40R on top of that? Is that what we're doing?
In Lua.
In Lua.
Okay. We haven't even seen, we haven't even seen what the overlay district's capable of doing. I think you guys are, it's a good idea, you're rushing it way too fast. North Situate doesn't, you just said it, doesn't have sewer. And here we are, we're going to, and I said, "This is why I was against the overlay district, expanding that. This is going to be great, and we can't even do anything for North Situate. You have a restaurant that's been there for 75 years, and they're on a tight tank." It's wrong.
It's wrong, might be.
I just, Plymouth's a lot different than Situate. You're increasing the density? You're, you know, I didn't look at this because I was listening to what you had to say, but you're increasing density, and the state wants to pay us? I mean, nothing's for nothing, I don't think. I just, I just think it's way too fast. We're doing Green Bush before North Situate's, you know, I'm surprised they didn't get angry at you. I mean, you have to, you know, we've got to take care of the sewer issue first before we...
Yeah, and I don't want to, that's why I said, we're focused on Green Bush, but I did not want you to not be aware of the potential to create a 40R district at some point in North Situate as well, as another revenue generating opportunity through these incentives. Totally understand the limitations, that's not going to happen, it's not going to happen now, but, you know, Green Bush is going to be developed in at least one spot, in a meaningful way. And we in the EDC would like to be able to take advantage of that for the town. For the town from a revenue generating perspective, and for the town in a design guidelines perspective, to make sure that we can have a say in what we want that area to look like. That's, you know, that overflow parking lot is a big parcel, relatively speaking, in Situate. So it represents a big opportunity, and also, you know, but also, it's got to be developed the right way, right? So that we're happy about it. And we feel that those design guidelines that we can set give us more control than we would have otherwise to make sure that what does go in there, you know, meets the expectations of the town.
So you're saying, to John's point, if someone wants to come in and they just want to maximize every square foot on their parcel, you, EDC Planning Board, has, there's more teeth? By adopting this, you can say you want bleached clapboards, and you want a brick front, or as a right, "I'm a developer, and I can just say, this is what I'm, this is what you're getting."
The design criteria that basically establishes what it's going to look like, and that's what they're going to comply, that's the control that you have.
It's us telling them instead of them telling us.
Okay, all right.
As long as it doesn't have a severe negative economic impact on the applicant. And it's DHCD that makes up their mind about that.
That's something I would, I would only say, that's the key to me, because as soon as you have a matter of right, then it's hands-off, okay? But I'd like to know what DHCD says with design criteria, because I'm like, if we're going to power, if we're going to hand off that power, if you're control, then I think that's, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I just know for myself, my experience on Front Street with all of the large buildings that were going on down there, just asking them to put six-over-one windows to make it look somewhat charming was like, "No, we can't afford to do that, and we don't need to do that. We're going to put in big plate-wrapped glass windows." And I'm like, you know, "You want to make it look a little quaint, add a little shingles or something." "Oh, no, we're not going to do that because we don't..." That's, that to me, when I was fighting on small details, to me, was like, "Well, you're trying to add charm to the downtown when you're building massive structures." And the other thing I had mentioned to them was, "Set it back, insulation, you know, put the first floor, set back the second a little bit, and then the third, instead of making a complete straight-up building." They didn't want to do that because of the spacing of it. That's all I'm saying with design. If you have that authority of it, then I'm really interested in it because I think it has a lot of potential. Location of it, I'd love to see it shift a little bit, because I think, you know, what's being proposed, I'd rather see it shifted slightly, even if some of the properties were...
You know what you said, just pick a small parcel and try it.
That'd be great, to see how it goes.
On the parking lot for the MBTA, see if it actually is interesting to anybody.
Do you have the opportunity to expand it?
Oh, yeah.
Once you do one parcel?
I talked to the state about it today, and they said there's no problem. You have to go back to town meeting, and you have to fill out some more paperwork.
And to John's point, do you have time to do an updated design review plan in conjunction with this? Because the last thing you would want is the 40R to pass and not have those design...
Yeah, I believe it has to be part of the, it has to be set.
Because I thought Matt has said that we could come back at a later date, but we probably wouldn't want to do that.
Well, the state has to approve it besides town meeting, so the state can hold back their, well, they will hold back their approval if the design guidelines aren't ready yet. And the design guidelines don't have to go through town meeting, they can just go through the Planning Board and the state, you know, with whatever public hearings you might want to have. I looked at the ones that Matt gave us from Sharon and a couple of other towns, they're like 20-page documents for design guidelines. There's a lot of criteria in there. they're like twenty-page documents for design guidelines. There's a lot of criteria in there. So it's, it looks like it could potentially be a lot more than is in the village business overlay district. And more than your typical design review committee is going to require. Although I did ask him after it came up at the planning board meeting, could the design review be involved? And he said, the man I spoke to at the state said, yes, they could be involved, you know, in reviewing these before the planning board approved them. So I think there are a couple of controls built into it. You know, whether it's going to work every single time, you know, of course, you know, there probably going to be some situations where, you know, maybe, you know, there's less control than you're hopeful. But it looks like it's going to be more than there has been. And it's something, you know, some of the buildings that we've had in Harvard just, you know, because, because it is by right, it's kind of a trade-off that the state seems like they're giving you, where they give you more control over the design, but they make the process quicker for the developer.
Right.
So are all we voting on is whether we want you guys to look at it and hold some public meetings?
Yes.
Have the planning board post those meetings.
But we can do us.
Yes, and if you want it to, that's fine.
I think January eighth, though, you're having, is that what the date that you wanted?
Well, initially, but I don't know if we're, you know, sometime January, February.
All right.
So I had a question. This law is about ten years old. So, and most of the towns that did it when it was adopted ten years ago, did it because they were proximate to transit centers. So has the planning board ever looked at this before? And did you not consider it when the Green Bush line went in? Because I'll wager that's when Kingston did it.
I suspect you're right. We talked about it and we went with the overlay, I suppose, of a 40R.
Back when, did you look at it when it first came out, ten years ago?
I, I don't know when exactly it came out, but the village business district was already in progress when.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with it, that's why I know when it came out, having seen it in several other communities who looked at it at that time.
We did look at it about five years ago, and there were a couple of members of the planning board that really didn't feel, that they were very concerned that the state had run out of money in the housing trust fund, and they kept bringing that up. It turns out that was just not, not the case.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or observations?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think there's any.
Questions from the audience before I do?
Ms. Burbine.
Ten minute Chris Rowe. I think one of the things we need to keep in mind in terms of the overlay district, as the last town meeting, we included South Shore off, so that's now part of the overlay district where it wasn't before. And that has tremendous potential to come forward in the foreseeable future. But also to, and we're thinking in terms of the other side, not the countryway side, but the Driftway side, to concentrate on that first. But also to, to the notion that, well, no one's done anything. The economy is just now really starting to ramp up. It went south in '07, and it's now finally, finally, coming back. So, and that's why we're seeing all of the development around town that we hadn't seen in the previous five or six years, to Sean's point. Nobody's done, they haven't had any money.
It just seems funny that nothing was done, and then I think the applicant, didn't the applicant submit something right before the town meeting, if I'm not mistaken? Nothing was done?
Excuse me?
I'm not really asking you, Ian, but I thought, maybe to Bill and Laura. I didn't think anything was done on Countryway until the last, a week or two before town meeting, and then wasn't there?
No, it was underway, the application was underway. What happened was, is that because of the regulations, it ended up, they had to file for a definitive subdivision. So that basically held their zoning, locked in their zoning for, for their application, because it was about, could have changed. So in effect, that protected them. So right now, we've approved that piece of property, we're talking fifty country mile.
So if this were to go through, we'd have to go back to.
Let me, if you don't mind. So what we've got now is in front of us for a mixed-use application under the overlay district. And that's going through the process of being approved.
But that happened right before town meeting, or special town meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
What they did was, they were afraid that maybe their zoning was going to change.
That's in 2011.
So they did, was they locked into it. Working with design review to come back up and take a look at that.
And I'm not disagreeing with Ian's point, it has a lot to do with the economy. Now, if this was adopted, would we rescind the overlay district vote at the?
Just in the locations where it's adopted, I think.
It would be a replacement.
But I don't think, can you do that? Because don't you get grandfathered? If I have land that's already covered by the village overlay district, it gives me two options. Either I can go back under the original, or I can actually go under the new one. I don't think you can rescind what you've already approved if you've already granted it. And others, they're gonna, they're still gonna, they're gonna still have either option now.
I spoke with Matt last week in the MIPC, and I'm not saying he's the absolute authority on 40R, but he, I specifically asked him, and he said it could be set up as a, it would replace.
It would, remember what I'm saying, from zoning, from, I know it. Once you're, once you're, once you're in a zone, and the zone changes, you're grandfathered. So you can then say, guess what, you'll have either option, either 40R or you, the village overlay district. And so that's when the ownership has it. That's, now if they end up selling it subsequently, then it, the grandfather status would then be waived. But I'm saying ultimately, initially, you would, you'd still have that status. Gives them either option.
Yeah, that was not my understanding, but I'm no expert.
So do you want to make a motion, we're going to get some more, some of these answers before we do it?
I'd rather get more information, but.
I'd be inclined to say have the hearing so they can have it. It's just a hearing, it's informational, right? That's all it is.
Yes.
They can ask questions. Would DHCD, right? It's what it is, it's not just you folks who are putting it on, it's, it's the state, right? Or what is it?
The state requires it, but they won't be at meeting. I mean, I think we may be able to get Matt Smith there, but, yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a hearing that the state requires, but.
Information.
Yeah. Basically, information on 40R, and are people interested in it for this property? Are they not interested in it? And it's aside from the zoning hearing.
And, and, I think you gain additional information by having the hearing as opposed to not having it.
Okay. Well, that's actually part two of what I was going to ask, is, we really don't, a lot of the questions that were just asked, we really don't have the answers for. Would we have them by the informational meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, one more question. Tricia, I'm one of those people that bid on the parking lot. How would this affect those people that bid?
It could go either way, right? Like John's.
Would it have to get, would that, would that whole process get thrown out? Or if I'm the person that bought the parking lot by doing this, it just added value to my property?
It depends on what the answer is to what Chris and John were just discussing. Because they bid based on the village overlay district, which is why the planning board acted swiftly last year to adopt it, so they had that option. So it depends on when they file, but clearly they have the village overlay option now, and depending on the answer to Matt's answer or John's answer, they may have both or one or the other.
But if I, all right, now, I don't know how many people bid, but if I'm, if I'm one of those people.
No, they're, they're under, they're under agreement now. So if they walk away, then that's a good point. But they're under agreement now. We actually met with them this morning in development review.
All right, well, I see no harm, yeah, go ahead.
A move to designate the planning board to hold a public hearing required for state approval of master general law 40R zoning, in order to determine the level of support for chapter 40R in the town of Situate.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, discussion? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both.
One day, four to one. All right. Just let us know when the hearing is, and then probably, we should probably get back together at some point after that, see how it went. Questions, all right?
Thank you very much.
Folks, happy holidays. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the next, which is a discussion of the town election voting machine. Kathy Curran.
This is very straightforward. She just needs the board to get permission to try a voting machine at the election. And since you're the town fathers, you have to give permission.
I get it to you right now. There's no motion.
Move to allow town to use a new voting machine in the upcoming election.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Update, Nancy Holt, town accountant, concerning FY15 finances, financial software bid, and a retrofit of the network server. Nancy, good evening.
Good evening. Got a whole slate of things to talk about.
I think you do have a few things. First is the general fund budget performance FY15 year-to-date.
Okay. I also want to apprise the board that on your last meeting, you did the tax classification hearing, and the tax recap was filed successfully with the Department of Revenue. And our tax rate for fiscal 15 was set at thirteen dollars and ten cents per thousand dollars of value, and it was thirteen dollars and five cents last year. So it didn't go up that much, which is good. I did send you a memo that's in your packet for the local receipts for fiscal year 2015. It's fiscal 15 budget and fiscal 14 budget. That's what happens when you reuse a grid. Sometimes you forget to change the titles. So I just wanted to correct that. And that was as of October 31st. And we were running ahead for actual dollars having been received, but as a percentage of projection, we were behind 1.2%. We did project that we would take in 4.9 million this year as compared to 4.6 million last year. And part of that is, the biggest driver of our local receipts is motor vehicle excise. So motor vehicle excise is usually billed in about ten commitments over the calendar, over the fiscal year, but the largest one is in the spring. So that one will be somewhere between 1.8 to $2 million. So we haven't seen that one yet. And that's one of the biggest drivers of our increases in local receipts. So we expect to continue to gain ground. And as of November 30th, the receipts that have been reported so far, there'll be a couple other small ones. We actually are almost $50,000 to the good, and we're still at the 1.2% behind where we want to be. And again, that will be probably picked up in the motor vehicle excise when we get that first commitment out, which I know Pam's here, and she's just chomping at the bit to get that out in January. Yeah, I can tell. Joy all over her face. And we also, I wanted to provide you with a general fund budget update for fiscal 15, and that's in your packet as well. And there's just a few line items that were showing that they were beyond their benchmark, meaning so many months through the year, they should be at X percent, and these were a little bit beyond. And we had the county assessments at 50%, and the South Shore Regional School assessment at 49.8%. And that is because we pay those quarterly, when we pay the South Shore Regional Assessment quarterly, and we paid two quarters, so we should be at that mark. And the county assessments, we pay twice a year, so we've paid half of it so far.
God bless you.
The Plymouth County retirement and the workers' compensation are fully expended, and that's because we pay our Plymouth County Retirement Assessment on July 1st, and that gives us a 2% discount, which works out to be about $60,000, give or take, which is a nice little chunk of change to save. That's why we do it. And the workers' compensation, we transfer that into the trust fund as of July 1. Contributory group insurance is also higher than expected at 49%, and that's because we've already paid, at the time of this report, we paid our December coverage bill. So we had six months' worth of payments done. And the only other one that's explainable is the debt, which is at 58.8%. And we have a lot of bills that we pay in November. And it depends on the timing of the debt. You have two debt payments per year, one has principal and interest, the other just has interest. So we have several that have principal that is due in the fall. Now, the only one that's a little bit concerning is the liability and general liability and property insurance line. That was $430,000. We held that steady for fiscal 15 from fiscal 14, and we are 98.8% expended. And that always runs high, because we pay up all of our premiums at the beginning of the year. So we're just going to monitor that and move forward.
How would that change, Nancy? I mean, if you're paying your premiums at the beginning of the year, why would you be paying more onto it?
Deductibles.
For accidents or situations, okay. So deductibles are kicking in.
Yep. And when we set our rate, we don't have what our actual premiums are going to be. We have to go with what they think they're going to be, plus the credits we think we can apply to them. And if we pick up any additional coverages, that will also add to that. So we're just going to watch that line. We're still under, so it, we may be fine through the end of the year. If not, we'll take care of it at special town meeting with a transfer from another line that's doing better than expected. Because we always have a few lines that are doing better than expected.
So why would we do it at special, since we have the annual, oh, special and annual, I got you. Sorry.
Well, it's a good question, and for anyone at home who's wondering why you do it at one and not the other. Special town meeting in April is for things that are in this current fiscal year, and the annual is for next fiscal year. So that was a good question, thank you for that. Gave me a little moment to shine. I have the five enterprise funds, just quickly. The transfer station is right on track. It's a little behind last year in its expenditures, which is always a good thing. And it's within six tenths on its receipts from this time last year. So that's good. I didn't give it to you, because I did it today.
Okay.
Because I thought, well, general fund's fun, but we have five enterprise funds, you probably would like to know about that since I'm here. The waterways, they're $30,000 better than last year in their revenue collections, and their expenses are within one tenth of percent of last year at the same time. Water, their revenue was also up, but we expected that because we raised our water rates nineteen, over 19%. And their expenses are slightly down, and that's only because we haven't paid our water bill to Marshfield yet. Just going to hold on to that joy for a little while longer. Widow's Walk, they are doing very well. They're $4,000 beyond projection, they're $4,000 greater in revenue this time, this year, as they were for the last year. And that's two tenths behind where they want to be for their projections. So as always with Widow's Walk, we just keep an eye on it and see how we're doing. And their expenses are up about $30,000 from the same time last year, and that's because they did have a spending freeze last year in the spring, going to the end of fiscal year. So come the opening day in July 1st, they needed to stock up in some range supplies and merchandise supplies for the pro shop. So they did have a little bit higher than expected. And because of the refunding of their debt, their debt payment, the principal actually goes up on the last couple of years. So it's $15,000 higher than it was the prior year, and they've already paid that this year. And we only have two more years of the debt, fiscal 16 and fiscal 17.
Nancy, can you explain that? What, did we rewrite it, or was just, that's just the way it laid up?
It was refunded when it was called and refunded at a lower interest rate. So that skews the payment schedule.
Didn't go down, but it went up?
Overall, it goes down, but you, it gets a little spiky.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was, there was funds saved, but it's just the way it works out in your payment schedule. So, not real fund, but only two more years. Yay. We focus on that. And finally, on the sewer fund, they're about 2.6% higher than last year on their expenditures, and that's because of some repairs that they're doing down the plant and at that pump stations. And their revenue was a little bit off from last year, and we'll just continue to monitor them. And some of that could be the timing of the water and sewer bills. I also want to let you know that, as you know from being at the pump, gas prices have gone down, and we took a look at where we were right now for gas prices, for gas and diesel, and where we were a year ago. And our gasoline is down 17%, and our diesel is down 34%, which is very good, because fuel and lubricants is a line item that we struggle with. And last year, it was a budget buster for several departments. So that's a good thing that we wanted to bring to the board's attention, that we actually have someplace that it's budget savings. We didn't have to do anything for it. The economy is working with us, we like that. I wanted to bring to the board's attention as well, well, I'll ask the board if they have any questions on the fiscal 15 finances, as I prattle along at a very fast pace, I'm sorry.
Questions? Go ahead.
Done into glowing science. I love it. The financial software bid, the annual town meeting in April approved an integrated financial management system for $400,000 as part of the capital plan, funded $200,000 from borrowing and $200,000 from free cash. We've been working on procuring that software. We had three demonstrations from three vendors that we identified that could provide an integrated financial management system. And what, what we're trying to combine is payroll, collections, utility billing, general ledger, procurement, budget, fixed assets, all of that from one vendor. And we don't currently have that. We have it from at least two, sometimes three vendors, supplying those services. We had Softrite come in, we had Springbrook Financial, which is known as KDS, and we also had Munis come in and give us presentations. Two of them were in person, one of them was a webcast. And those were in the weeks of November 5th through November 14th, we had three different occasions. And we got feedback from everyone who attended. They all have what we need as a town. So we're now in the process of putting together the RFP to go out and seek proposals from all, any vendor that's interested in bringing forward a proposal to the town. I would expect that our current vendor for general ledger, which is Tyler Technologies, we might get multiple bids from them. They also own Munis. And from what I've seen from other municipalities, they also will bid for one of their other products, which is UniFund. So we may have one mother company bid for several of its subordinates coming forward. So that would be good. So that would be good. The more information we get, the more bids we get, the more we get choice-wise as well as price-wise. One of the things that we're very much interested in is our time labor management, having some type of portal so that our employees can now interact with the portal. They can access paid stubs, W2s, benefits, be used for recruitment, for applicants tracking, benefit tracking, and really bring us to where we need to be, where you would expect to be in the private sector and where we lag in the public sector. And that's something that Trish has done a lot of work with. And we just want to back that up with the software to make that a feasible and successful transition. So we'll, go ahead.
Are those three, the three that you've narrowed it down to? Or did you look at others?
No, we're open to looking at others. Those were three that we knew had the software. There aren't that many that have a complete suite.
Does Cronos have a complete suite?
They have mostly the TLM piece that the state uses for time labor management, but the general ledger stuff, I don't think so.
And are you consulting other towns to see which ones they have?
Yeah. I mean, it's a pretty small market. I mean, Munis is in about 200 municipalities and school districts.
And Softrite's in over 100.
Softrite's in 100, so there you go.
Those are the two big players. And then there's a couple other smaller ones. But it's all seeing what we can afford in what the capital plan has provided to us and what's going to work best for the town going forward. Because we were looking for something that's going to grow with us and not just be good for the right now. And that RFP will be going out shortly as we need to further tailor it.
The payroll process for the town is entirely manual. And there's a lot of duplication of effort. And so this is a wholesale change to the way that we will do it.
We do a lot of importing, exporting, and reformatting in order to upload data rather than just be able to have it be seamless.
And the financial, the general ledger doesn't talk to PM and collections. So it's very, it's very unique for a town this size not to have an integrated financial package. Very surprising when I came.
To give you an example.
Since it's so expensive for the conversion, we couldn't have this conversation until last year.
To give you an example of our uniqueness, we currently have three different, and kudos to Pam and her office for dealing with three different payroll setups. There's payroll for the non-contributaries. It's a separate little system icon that you go into. There's payroll for the town employees and there's payroll for school employees. So they have to run three different payrolls. And then we have to do the backend of it from the three different payroll systems. So it's a headache for all involved. The same thing with the general ledger. The school department has their own general ledger and their own gen, literally general ledger system within the current software we have, and we have ours. So every time they run a warrant, we have to convert all of their numbers to our numbers through macros in Excel. So it's challenging. So that's things that both sides want to resolve. We want to be working on a single system where we have one chart of accounts that we can all agree on. We have one payroll system, just to align everything and make it much simpler and stop all of this.
Nonsense.
Yeah. I think it's silliness, but nonsense goes forward too.
It's a lot of time savings.
And finally, just on the retrofit for the network server, Tricia has touched it on her reports in the past, that the server room, which is currently off the accounting office, is not really fit for what it's doing. It's got the entire backbone of the town's network in that one room with a residential air conditioner supporting it. Karen Pritchard touched on that as well. It's got two windows in that room. It's not any type of a water leak, any type of a breakdown with that air conditioner like we had over the summer where it shut down the network because it got too hot in there. For most of the summer, I had to operate with, my office is next to it with that door open to try to vent the servers. And I don't have an air conditioner in my office. I do, I don't now. I can just feel it from under the door from the server room because we got a new one. But just to try to get some circulation to help those. And that's going to be, design is done to relocate that down where the other offices are in the bottom floor of this building. And then that server will go down in all of its network racks and be in a controlled environment so that our IT director can monitor it and actually have, he can be directly next to it. I can't think of the word. Adjacent. That was the word I was looking at. He can be adjacent to it. Right now, if Bill needs to see something or if something's happening in the network, he's got to walk all the way down the length of the hall, come into my office, say, excuse me, go into that wall, go in there and check it out, and then go all the way back down to his office. So if he's trying to do something with a support call or see something on his computer, he can't do that. So it's very inconvenient and not very efficient. And we want to address that. And certainly, anything we do down there is just going to carry forward to any future area that the town hall might be in. And would certainly help as making it more efficient and safer. Now, going back to the software we're looking at, several of our options, if not all of our options, can be partially or fully implemented on the cloud. So we don't necessarily have to buy additional servers to operate them. And that's something that Bill is very active in, our IT director, he's sitting in on all of these presentations and very interested to see how he can manage that in the cloud. And I think that's where we'll probably end up.
Questions? Good stuff.
Stunned into silence, always a good thing.
Nancy, thank you.
All good, all needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Thank you very much.
Same to you as well.
All right, now we have a discussion, a Clap Road article. All right, Tricia. There's nothing in our backup on this. What exactly are we talking about here?
Just briefly, I need some guidance for the board. As you know, this was IP'd at the November 13th town meeting. The developer is asking if that will be on the special town meeting warrant, I mean, or the annual town meeting warrant placed on it by the board. If not, we certainly need to give them an opportunity to put it on themselves. But since those things came together rather quickly before the last town meeting, I thought you should formally discuss it tonight in terms of how I can advise them.
How's board feel?
I mean, I think what we need to do is get ConCon to weigh in on it and get planning board to weigh in on it and find out if all the assumptions that they may go into are accurate. And then maybe we need another public meeting. People, I mean, that seemed to be a surprise to some people about it. And then, I mean, if everything is as we understood it initially, I see no reason not to put it back on there.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
How many public meetings do we have when there weren't, you know, there were nools in the audience, but now things will be different. If we do have such a meeting, I think we should have it at PF 44 or much larger.
Yeah, I think that's since the board that they needed more time to educate the public and informally visit. So I'll have Lorraine draft something to communicate to them that, you know, that's the board's pleasure.
If we can just hear the current concerns of ConCon.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning. I think the biggest concern that I had is, can they build it anyways? On that kind of area that we don't want all the traffic to be going on? And I know there's questions about wetlands and how you can get over it.
Right.
We were given the impression based on information that we had before that it wasn't, that wasn't going to be an obstacle for the developers.
Right. I think they're moving in that direction. We should, forgive me, we could have asked Laura, but that's fine.
When we do have this meeting, could we have everyone there, planning, conservation? It's, you know, at every meeting, if we're going to have more than one, just, at least one representative from the different committees?
Well, I think we will encourage them to informally visit those boards and then have the Public Information Center at the community center to hear the concerns that the board heard prior to town meeting.
But more than just us?
Yeah, yeah. It'd be their meeting again. So, okay.
We also have someone from traffic there. Because I think with regards to how the public safety building turns out on the 10th and where that exit is and where this proposed entrance exit is really needs to be discussed as well.
Yep. They already did a map for that showing the distance, so that's a good point. Thank you.
And possibly Mass Highway, if possible. Or at least has it.
You know, I, my feeling on it is, is that, you know, a lot of that stuff is stuff that's going to have to be vetted out with a, if they're going to be going forward, they need to file their application, file their application. And so all this stuff, traffic studies, wetlands, identifying it, traffic count, traffic reports are all going to have to be filed at that time. Then that's the time to go forward and take a look at it if they're looking for a discussion with the board about other options. I'm not sure whether our town departments are going to be able to weigh in on anything because it's not going to be able to evaluate it. So, I mean, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse here to have a meeting to sit down and talk about it because you're not going to have the information unless they have it. If they have the information, then the town can evaluate, take a look at it and have some feedback, some meaningful feedback. If they don't have it, then you're wasting a lot of time until they actually file what they're proposing. And then at that time, they're going to have to demonstrate that to the zoning board of appeals. And the purview of this board would be whether or not, you know, access is an issue and, you know, I kind of think you can have the meeting, makes sense for the purposes of trying to get that information. If they don't have the information, you're wasting your time. And they're going to have to have that information, you know, and for them to put it on the annual town meeting or special town meeting at this point, they can try to do it on their own and go forward with it. But you got to, they're going to have to disclose the information so that not only this board, but the public understands just exactly what they're proposing. And until you have that, then neither this board nor the public's going to be in support of it. So they got to come up front with it, show it and explain why they need it and how it's going to benefit the public, how it's going to benefit the town by gaining access vis-à-vis one way while, you know, giving the town a lot of land in the other. So.
That was another thing, you know, they kind of told us the scope of the project, but didn't, just didn't put it on paper.
No commitment to it.
Yeah, so.
I mean, they're going to have, they must have it because the long and short of it is if they're going to file through the zoning board, they're going to have to produce it then and there. So it's, put it on the table, we'll discuss it if they have it. If they don't have it, then you know what? They got to get it.
Okay.
If that helps you.
Yep. Very much. Thank you.
Next, review. Excuse me, January, February, Board of Selectment agendas.
Just briefly, thank you, Lorraine, for putting this on. Your agendas in January and February are very, very packed already. Unusually in January because not only do you have budget reviews, but you have two very long presentations in those meetings. One is the fire management study that we've held off on for a few months, as well as the final report of the MAPC Economic Development Study and the MAPC Parking Study, which they're also coming in. So those are four. One's the January 20th meeting, I know for the fire study. I think the MAPC Parking Study is a January meeting as well. Lorraine, maybe?
January 6th.
Right.
Health and Production Plan.
Right.
MAPC presentation.
So just as a heads up and for planning for the staff in your office, if you can possibly meet earlier, because they will be long evenings, we can arrange for dinner, you know, subs or pizza like we have. But usually, you'd only have one meeting like that, but there's probably going to be two or three unfortunately that are going to go quite long. So I just wanted to prepare you. We don't need to decide tonight, but.
One thing I would say is just make sure that all the department heads understand that they're going to be given a time, 10 minutes. I kind of would like their presentation to be, say what the things, what are the differences? What are the challenges? What's the difference? So obviously, we'll review it. I'm not trying to make this kind of march through it because everybody can ask as many questions they want. Just that I'd like them to be prepared to do their presentation, boom, boom, boom. They've done it now for four years.
Right. And the instructions this year were level funded because we're trying to keep the maintenance of the financial operating budget in check with, you know, hopefully, successful building projects that will also tax their resources and time in the next few years in addition to the normal operating, so.
Because I'm going to try to keep to it. It won't be, but at least try to keep the timing for going through it. I will say this, here's the deal with the budgets. Whenever we start, we're going to stop in two hours, take a break, and take a 10 or 15 minute break. We're not going to go four hours straight. I'm just telling the whole board, we're not doing that. So, you know, I just think it's fair to, to you folks and everybody on the board to at least take a few minutes break.
So, and just since.
And at 11 o'clock, we're done. Whether, I'm not going to, unless it's, I think, I don't know if there's a rule. Joe used to say there was a rule you have to go beyond. I don't know if he came up with the Joe Norton Rule, but regardless, then 11 o'clock, we're done. You're not going to get much done after four and a half hours, five hours worth of work. We'll bump it over to the next meeting. If we have to have an additional meeting, we'll do it.
Yeah, and that might be a possibility. And so as you plan your schedules in January, February, if you could be mindful of that for your selectmen meetings, it would be helpful. And be open to having an extra Tuesday meeting.
Do you know what the schedule, I know obviously 6, 20th, and what about beyond that? Do we, do we have a schedule yet?
What do we add on?
We have January 6th. We've already, I've been in touch with all, everybody's agreed to start.
6:00 PM, yeah.
On January 6th. Then we have the 20th.
Okay.
February 3rd.
Okay.
February 17th.
Okay.
And we have three meetings in March, March 3rd, March 10th, March 24th.
And Toll Brothers are coming in again for one of those meetings too, right, Lorraine?
Yeah, they're probably looking at January 20th.
They would like to commit in January, I mean, they would like to commit.
Like, I think the 20th.
Do we have to follow up on that? Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
I wonder if we don't find another day to try and, just grab another Tuesday? Or maybe not.
Well, let's, yeah, I think we can maybe see how January 6th goes and then reconnoitre because your January 6th and 20th are full, so we might need to, on the 6th, discuss.
You said the 3rd and the 17th?
6th and 20th. Oh, yeah.
So the one they might consider is the 10th, just as an option.
I know this isn't of major importance, but we have to also remember that we, the Heritage Days, we wanted to talk to them before it got too much closer to Heritage Days.
So Chief still needs to debrief with them. And then once that happens, they'll get on your agenda. And as he was out for a while, that's a little behind.
His March may actually be too late for any kind of changes, I would imagine.
That was going to go into other business for me, unless you've talked. Because I got something I was going to edify the board with.
Okay, thank you.
I have to try to figure out what else I was going to tell the board. I forgot.
All right. So new business, discussion, vote, town of Situate Annual License Renewals. So, we need a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following liquor licenses for 2015. Granic Grill, Harborside Wine, Malanies, Barker Tavern, River Club, Oro, Tesoro, Hadley Country Club, Front Street Corme, San Zen Cafe, San Zen Retail, Galley, Situate Package Store, Widow's Walk Golf Course, Riverside.
Motion by Mr. Vignani.
I'm just so sorry, I just printed, we printed out a current list as of today, so I want to make sure you...
Yeah, he's had change from your computer.
Does that change? Let's see.
That one's okay.
I don't believe there are any changes in that section, just so we know.
All right, that motion was made by Mr. Vignani, and it was seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, say none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common vic license for 2015. The Barker Tavern, the Gannet Grill, River Club, Oro, Tesoro, Hadley Country Club, San Zen Cafe, Galle, Widow's Walk Golf Course, Riverside, Sergio's Grotto, Coffee Corner, Egypt Country Store, Harbor House of Pizza, Morning Glories, River Pizzeria, Ronnie Shomes, Silent Chef, Wilbur's, Sand Hill's General Store, the Situate Lobster Farm.
Second. Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani this time. Discussion, say none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Aye, unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following entertainment licenses for 2015. Barker Tavern, Gannet Grill, River Club, Tesoro, Hadley Country Club, San Zen Cafe, Galle, and Riverside.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Quick question, did Sean, did you, did you get the ones on page two, on the next page?
Yep.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yep, Silent Chef, Wilbur's, Sand Hill.
Okay.
Yep, right?
Yep, we wrote everything.
You did.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class II license for 2015. Sea Crest Auto, Driftway Auto, McBrien Diagnostic Repair.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. O'Toole. Discussion, say none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. A unanimous.
No.
So, 401 abstention by Mr. Harris. I think you missed one, didn't you?
Nope.
Nope, we did that.
You did the Riverside one, I missed that, I thought we did the Situate Lobster Farm, all right.
Nope.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class III licenses for 2015. Ryan Allen LLC, Ray's Repair.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. One abstention, 40.
And lastly, move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following septic, septic disposal for 2015. All Town Inc., Ronaby Inc., DBKR Anderson Plumbing Company, Resonno Davis Sanitary Pumping, PF Spencer Inc., Burrito Environmental Services, Septic Pro Inc., and Joseph Bonomi.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, unanimous. Moving on to the next agenda item, which happens to be a discussion vote to close the April 13th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion?
Please.
Move to close the April 13th, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
At 9:50 PM? I'm sorry, 8:50 PM?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all those in favor, say aye? Aye. A unanimous. Other business, correspondence.
Yeah, we do have a letter, right? Do we have a copy of that letter, Lorraine, or do I have to read it from the computer?
Um, it's just a thank you note.
Oh, it is, okay, because I couldn't, I couldn't read actually who...
I couldn't either, I was trying to...
Citra Community Christmas?
Yes, I saw that, I wasn't sure.
I can't figure out the writing of the person's...
Right, I couldn't either.
Jane...
Jane or Jim or James? I know, it sounds awful.
I don't know, it's hard to read the person's handwriting, let me look up the board.
Ford, something Ford.
Jane Ford?
Giovanni.
Jeez, you know what?
Well, that says, the last word's Chairwoman.
Is it?
Looks like Jane Ford.
It would be the achievement of Citra Community Christmas.
It's basically a thank you note for a donation we made in memory of Susan Fippen.
And we just can't read the woman's signature, that's all.
Right, it's for Community Christmas.
So thank you for the nice letter. I think that's it for, for correspondence, right? And we don't have any minutes?
No, not tonight.
All right, other business, Marty? Eddie?
Nothing, I've been, I've been gone, so.
Maura?
I just have a question, with the tight schedule for all our budgetary, I know former years being in advisory, we've always talked about a charter review committee, take a look at some of the timing of this, as well as some other issues, what's the process with putting something like that together to mediate some of this pressure that we've had to track out for the past couple of years?
Well, we did, when we changed the annual town meeting date, that gave us a little bit more time, that's what we did back then, but I don't think we've ever had enough people to be on that charter review committee.
I don't think we have one since like...
We haven't had one.
2001 or two, or something like that.
A long time, yeah.
You know...
Tricia, is there a date that we could change, would make it easier, other than pushing town, annual town meeting out further?
Candidly, unless you push town meeting out by a month, you're not going to achieve anything appreciable.
Which would require a charter and a bylaw?
No, change, just simply changing the date would not, because that's in the bylaw, but the, all the things require the 30 days before this and nine months for that, that's all charter, yeah.
So if we, can we take a look at doing a charter review committee to help this process? I mean, I know we have a ton on our plate, but...
I would say after, after annual town meeting, and obviously we had elections, I'd be happy to say, look it up for a summer, because, I mean, you're going to be looking about, one, trying to nominate people who are interested in getting in and vetting that process, and two, then giving them direction as to exactly what we're looking at, unless they're going to say, we're going to look at the whole entire charter, and I think that's something that we need to have that discussion, if that's what we're looking for, or do we have specific direction as to what we want charging them with? And then saying, take a look at it, and then bring it back, I guess, probably the next annual, I don't think you'd want to do it at the special, because you want everybody to see it. I'd be open to that, if it makes sense, you know, to review it. Thought, I don't know.
Yeah, if it makes sense.
Anything else that I was saying, other business, or is that the only thing?
Oh, no, sorry, no, thanks, no, I just think that would, it's all overdue.
Tony?
Had a final forecasting meeting a couple weeks ago, that went very well, had all the department heads that are involved with it, the school committee, obviously Tricia, Nancy, and Pam, and did the preliminary numbers on it, made a few adjustments, and I think we're, we're pretty much on track, looking good going into this fiscal year. I think we'll probably have one more meeting and just finalize everything, but I think the assumptions were pretty good, conservative in nature, but everyone was in consensus in terms of what, what we made, so that was, that was a good meeting. What else? Not much meeting wise. We're turning into our winter sports, I can give a little sports report if you'd like, John?
Absolutely.
Winter sports seasons are coming along, and hockey, and basketball, and indoor track, and all these things are coming along. Basketball team had an opening game tonight at the high school, and they beat Hingham. I got a text saying that they won, so that's great. Hockey team started against Cohasset, the boys that is, and they tied 2-2. So both are off to a good start, the girls lost their opening game, but had a good game, and I don't know about the girls, they had their opener tonight as well, so. Just go down to the field, every Tuesday and Friday night, one of the two teams is playing at the high school, you got to make a little bit of a trip for the hockey, but it's good entertainment.
Thank you. Sean?
Nope, nothing, John.
There's something I wanted, a few things I wanted to hit up. One was, you know, for those people who are here, there's a painting up on the wall, or it's a print, that was donated by Lloyd Marshall's estate, it's been up there for a while, and I just thought I'd say, it was very nice of the family to donate in the memory of their father who passed earlier this year, and it kind of spruces up the room here, which is very nice. Second thing was, I want to thank all the people for Santa coming into the harbor, appreciate Santa, he was doing his few tricks, trying to teach the kids, you know, how he has ballast and is able to float pretty well, and just want to thank all those people involved for doing it. The other thing I wanted to say, his first night went really well for those people who decided to go down, that was a great opportunity for the merchants down on Front Street, and also for, you know, what they've done for trying to make it much more inviting with some signs, and also some, as you could say, like, flags that are hanging down. I know that the merchants up in North Citrus did an excellent job last Saturday with Santa, and also trying to encourage more business there, and I think it's, it really behooves the town to try to maximize as much as they can between now and Christmas to shop locally as she can.